Good evening. Welcome to this evening's Yukon City Council Yukon Municipal Authority Meeting. It is October the 7th at approximately 7:00 PM. We're gathered here in council chambers in the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brian Pillmore.
Here.
Jeff Wooten.
Here.
Shelley Selby.
Here.
Adam Schreiber.
Rodney Zimmerman.
Here.
At this time, we'll have our invocation delivered by Pastor Gene Newberry of South Yukon Church of Christ, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise as you are able.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow before you and we recognize you as our God and as our Creator. Father, you have loved us this day, you've given us blessings upon blessings, and now we've come upon, we've come to you, dear Father, for wisdom and discernment as we discuss the things of this community. As your word says, if we pray for the welfare of the city, the welfare will fall upon us. So, Father, bless this community in every way. Bless each and everyone that is here. Watch over them and care for them and guide them as they discuss the things this evening. We pray all this to Jesus Christ who reigns with you and the Holy Spirit. One God, forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us. At this time, we'll have our time of presentations and proclamations. As a note, the Oklahoma Check Festival Day was presented last Thursday at the Check Building prior to Check Day, and it's included in this packet for public record. Would the veterans please join me in the front for their proclamation? And they'll give this proclamation. It's the honor of the city of Yukon and its citizens to recognize our Armed Forces veterans who have sacrificed and in many instances paid the ultimate price for our freedom. And whereas thousands of brave Americans served our country with courage, honor, and valor, we, along with millions of other Americans, can attest to the importance of their sacrifices and contributions for our freedom and security. The citizens of Yukon will always remember and pay homage to our military community, both active and inactive, for their contribution, dedication, and commitment to the cause of freedom. In honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of a people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy. I, Brian Pillmore, Mayor of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim October 11th through November 11th Veterans' Day itself as Veterans Appreciation Month. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, in the United States, residents, about 6.1% are veterans in the United States, 8.2% in Oklahoma, and in Yukon, it's 8.4. So, that's about one in every 10 residents in Yukon is a veteran. So, quite a few veterans around. A lot of events coming up. Red Scout, the VA, coming to the museum and the Post Thursday from 10:00 to 2:00 to get your shots. Main Street on Saturday. We're pretty excited to have Matt Wheatley, who we named our post after. There, we have a big plaque we want to present to him. It's so exciting times in Yukon.
I want to thank the city council, the mayor, and all the residents of Yukon for supporting our veterans. It's very important, especially when you come back from overseas. Sometimes we were never accepted when we came back, and there are other times that we were. So, I want to thank all those folks that are supporting us all the time. Thank you.
As a Purple Heart city and as a city that honors its veterans, I wanted to give a moment to the Main Street Board for them to mention something that's really special, and I'm glad to participate in it on behalf of my grandfather and my wife's grandfather.
Absolutely. Thank you. This Saturday, starting at 10:00 AM at the Post, we are doing a Veterans and Hometown Heroes salute. Hope you all can join us there. Again, it's Saturday at 10:00 AM. Hope to see you all there.
Additionally, the veterans banners will fly on Main Street for the next month. You'll start to see those go up as the Check Day banners come down. Honors each and every veteran that many family members place those in honor of those veterans. And I just think so much during this time and when we eventually celebrate Veterans' Day, remembering the sacrifice that, you know, some gave it all, and it's humbling. Thank you. At this time, we'll have a proclamation for Fire Prevention Month. We got them hiding in the wings. Whereas the city of Yukon is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the increasing presence of lithium ion batteries in many household devices presents unique fire risks. The 2025 Fire Prevention theme is "Charge into Fire Safety." Lithium Ion Batteries in Your Home emphasizes the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Many of the devices used daily in households, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium ion batteries, which, if misused or improperly charged, can overheat, catch fire, or explode. I, Brian Pillmore, Mayor of the city of Yukon, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Fire Prevention Month. Thank you for everything that you all do to help prevent fire and also to keep us safe when we have needs in our own health. At this time, we'll recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. We'll take up the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. Should the authority determine that any item cannot be approved by unanimous vote, that item will be removed from the consent docket and considered separately. City Manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 9, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll recess as Yukon Municipal Authority and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Similarly, we'll take up the Yukon City Council Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. Should the council determine that any item cannot be approved by a unanimous vote, that item will be removed from the consent docket and considered separately. City Manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 9, 2025. Payment of material claims in the amount of $2,115,032.24. Approval of the renewal of the HVAC maintenance contract with RB Aikens Company for the Liebert Computer Room air conditioning equipment as recommended by the IT Director. The agreement between Create Co. Studios and Mabel C. Fry Library for mural services in the amount of $2,500 as recommended by the librarian. The items on the attached list as surplus in authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal as requested by the Technology Department. And approval of Budget Amendment Number 11 for fiscal year '25-'26. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? One item of discussion was around the budget amendment which deals with shifting some cost savings that I discussed earlier with the city manager around, he found some cost savings in streets, which is still a big, important area that we're still going to commit it to doing all the projects we've slated, and covering what is not necessarily overrun, but it could be more than we originally budgeted, depending on where the 10% overage on the police parking, storage, and training facility lands when the construction's finished. Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have discussion and possible action to accept and award the bid for the city of Yukon Parks and Rec Master Plan 2025 RFP to RDG Planning and Design in the amount of $150,000 to authorize the mayor to execute all associated documents as recommended by the Parks and Rec Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Guess who, Ashley? Hi, Stephanie. Stephanie Burdine, 515 Maple. I've just had several people ask me if I was going to be here tonight to explain why we need to spend $150,000 on this.
That's a great question. I'll share some of my perspective, then I'll ask Parks and Rec Director McClure if he would address the scope of this. One of the key elements that we've heard feedback from many residents on, not just on the Parks and Recreation area and scope, but also in other areas of the city, is to have a long-range plan. At the time of some capital expenditures and budgeting, we talked, I believe, trying to remember, I think we had two residents come to our budget session and said, hey, we really, other cities have a long-range capital plan. We need to do that kind of long-range planning. We have nine great parks in our city. There've been some improvements made to those. We want to have a long-range, comprehensive plan, and we don't necessarily have the expertise within our city to do that. Director McClure, would you share some of the scope of this? Because I think when I read it, I was like, wow, they're doing that, and that, and that.
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to do it. I think you all are aware this is the first time that this has been done in Yukon to have a comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan, so that's obviously really exciting. For us, I think a big part of this that everyone should be aware of is that we want everyone involved in this process. So, we want the entire community to voice what they want, what they need in a Parks and Recreation system. And so, that's what this plan primarily does, is finds out from the residents, from stakeholders in the community, just what does everybody want in a Parks and Recreation system? So, that community engagement is a big part of that process. That's really important. As far as the scope goes, I can kind of go down the list here of what all is included in this process. Obviously, you'll have the initial organization of the project, like I mentioned, the public engagement portion of that. There'll be community demographics and trends research. There'll be an inventory of parks, recreation, and open spaces, so everything that we have in our system. They'll look through the opportunities for growth and development. They'll look into a cost analysis of, you know, at what point should this park or this facility or an aquatic facility be repaired, and at what point should we build new? At what point are we flushing money down the drain, and at what point do we build new and start over on that? There'll be operations and maintenance planning, vision planning, benchmarking of best practices, and then just overall creation of the document from there. So, it is truly a comprehensive system-wide.
About what, nine, 10-month project?
It is. So, it's very extensive. It's something that, like I said, it's our first time doing it here in Yukon. We've done a lot of good work over the last several years in our parks, but what this does, as you mentioned, Mayor, was it puts together a 10-year plan. It's not just, oh, well, this would be nice to do, or this would be nice to do. It really lays it out to where we know exactly what we're going to do, what it's going to cost, what it's going to cost five years from now, if we wait five years to do it. And so, it's an overall look into all of that.
Did that 150 come out of your budget or the capital improvement budget?
Capital improvement budget.
When I think about it, when you say that timeframe, 10 years, I think about how much money we spend in different Parks and Rec initiatives, whether that's programs or actual capital expenditures, et cetera. And if I just take $150,000 and say, if we were doing this right, we'd do like a full-blown thing every 10 years, maybe a refresh, you know, every five or something. That's 15K a year, and I think if it saves us from spending 15K in the wrong place, then I think it's the right decision.
Absolutely. And it's an investment into the quality of life of our community, which I think is something that everyone would want to invest in. But I agree with you, when you break it down like that, it's a small investment every year into the quality of life of the community.
Appreciate the team, and you guys evaluated. Tell me, how many vendors did you evaluate for this, and you had in-depth meetings with how many follow-ups?
Yes, we had 10 proposals that we received, which I think speak to the fact that people really want to work with the city right now and the department, and these are 10 high-quality firms. Of those, we brought in six companies for presentations and interviews, and then narrowed it down to three and made our selection from there.
Great process. Any other questions on this item? Seeing no additional discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you for explaining it, and thank you for the water, the spray water parks, because with the heat lasting so long and the lifeguards all being back in school, I think that's a great service for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Burdine. Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have discussion and possible action to accept and award the bid for the city of Yukon Police Department Range Training Classroom and Tower RFP to Dabney Steel Frame and Construction in the amount of $629,750, and authorize the mayor to execute all associated documents as recommended by the police chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just like these next three items, just for those of you, this are all coming out of our capital improvement, just so you know that we're not spending regular budgets, stuff that we have budgeted out of that capital improvement.
And we had approximately $600,000 in that budget. This is a little bit beyond that, and that's what the movement from our budget in streets to our budget for capital improvements in police, we're achieving some cost savings in some streets projects and moving them over there. Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have discussion and possible action to accept and award the bid for the city of Yukon Police Department Parking Garage RFP, which will provide protection to the most valuable police vehicles and equipment to Dabney Steel Frame and Construction in the amount of $415,800, and to authorize the mayor to execute all associated documents as recommended by the police chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
You know, all three of these went to the same thing. Was it a package proposal, or did they win all three of them?
Each of the projects was independent. They were not collectively bid on. So, with the group of vendors we had, we had four different companies that made pre-bid meetings. This particular project had two bids submitted on it from the four, but they were independent.
Can you, Chief Corwin, while you're here, could you break down the one that we just approved, the training facility? How many bids?
There were five individuals that showed at the pre-bid meeting, which was mandatory. There were actually four bids on the facility.
Four bids on the first one, two bids on the second one, and then how many bids on the third?
Two on the covered parking. So, again, all four companies showed at the pre-bid meetings for each project, but when it came down to bid submittals, there were only two submitted for the covered structure, two for the garage, and then four for the range and classroom.
Thank you. Any other discussion on item nine, associated with the parking garage RFP? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have discussion and possible action to accept and award the bid for the city of Yukon Police Department Covered Parking RFP, which provides full-covered parking for all police department vehicles to Dabney Steel Frame and Construction in the amount of $122,540, and authorize the mayor to execute all associated documents as recommended by the police chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Thank you, Chief, for that explanation. Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have discussion and possible action to approve the 2025 update to the city of Yukon Emergency Operations Plan as recommended by the emergency manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Chief, could you brief us with just a few of the high points that are highlighted here in the changes?
Yeah, for our city, our size, we annually update this plan and go through it. We've transitioned from book binder series to electronic series, which you guys should have already or will be getting a copy of. The biggest changes we saw were eliminating contact information directly related to staff and council, and streamlining duties with position so that we're not constantly having to re-change or update a phone roster, which is readily available electronic for staff to operate on in the event of emergency, but identify the position and what the responsibilities are for each of the positions within government, within each department, and let those departments handle the succession as it relates to whatever the emergency may be. Overall, regarding mitigation, planning, preparedness, the types of things that affect our community, those stayed about the same. Our demographic information, everything related to the preface of the plan stayed the same. So, this with the changes we've seen in roles in government, this was really about updating our staff roster and listing and making it really come in line with what we've got existing in city staff now.
Very good. Thanks for your diligence on this.
Thank you for doing electronically those big packets. I did want to say, I did read the entire thing, and I had down which page it was. My name is spelled wrong, and I was like, I just want them to know. I bet they're testing to see if I read this.
It was a trick.
Yes, it was. It was, I can't remember what page it is.
If you'll make sure I get an email, I'll make sure it gets corrected.
It's BY, not BI, but I was like, they're just trying to see.
Thank you. Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have discussion and possible action to approve the RFP for the Route 66 illuminated sign, and authorize city staff to proceed with the RFP processes outlined. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Christina, can you come and brief us briefly on this outstanding artwork that you've created?
Thank you. Good evening. So, the illuminated sign, it basically encapsulates some of the things that make Yukon great and explores some of its varied and rich history. There is a lot of items that we could have included. Unfortunately, for something like this, we decided to scale back a little bit so that each item could be photographed well, and when people decide to stop and take their picture with it, that was the plan, so.
Where will it be located?
So, right now, the location is at 313 West Main. There is a monument sign there now that we are looking, there are a couple of places that we're looking to relocate that, so it won't just be taken down, but it will be relocated to another location.
It's the brick, the yellow brick, right in front of the prison fence?
Yes.
And it has the flowers in it?
Yeah, and then there's the Longhorn statue that's there as well. So, those items, I'm not sure about the Longhorn statue, if that will stay, but we're expecting people to be able to take their photograph, and with the size of what it could be, there may need to be more space, so that's why that sign is looking to be relocated. I mean, I imagine we'll keep the Longhorn, and it may.
I was going to say.
It may find a new home as well, but it's kind of off to the side a little bit more than the welcome sign is right now.
And I'd love for someday to get rid of that fence.
The fence will be pushed back, but I think we're planning on extending the fence a little bit because it is right next to the railroad tracks, and we want people to be safe when they're stopping to take their picture and explore the grounds, so.
Thanks so much for your work on this, Christina.
Thank you.
Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action to approve simplified planned unit development, SPOD, requested by Bryden Capital LLC for property located at 912 Westport Boulevard, as recommended by the planning commission with conditions. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have discussion and possible action to approve a replat requested by Koi Properties LLC for property located 1812, 1816, Common Circle, as recommended by the planning commission. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll have discussion, review, and possible action on special use permit requested by Outlaw Services, Kelly Dennis, to operate a short-term rental at 1204 Excalibur Court as recommended by the planning commission. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Got one coming.
Thank you for your time. My name's Jackie Pierceaw. I live at 920 Majestic Avenue in Kingsway, in the Kingsway addition. I was here for the testimony given at the planning commission. I myself gave information. I've had a chance to do a little bit more research into the situation, and Yukon does have code on the use and permitting of short-term rental licenses, which is what we're talking about here. It states specifically that, in two places. Number one, that the short-term rental license cannot be in conflict in any way with any covenant, condition, or restriction. The homeowners' association has a provision that specifically states that no home in the addition can be used for anything but residential purposes, and Airbnb does not fall into that. Also, another slight concern is that Ms. Dennis admitted that she had used the property as an Airbnb on, I can't remember, three to eight occasions without being properly permitted. The Yukon Code also states that no permit can be granted if there are violations. I don't know if the violations have been brought or not, but she did admit to having violated the code. So, respectfully, it's my opinion, this commission just doesn't have the authority to grant a special use permit in my addition.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Vice Mayor, would you be willing to amend your, sorry, oh, it's your motion, sorry. Councilwoman Zimmerman, would you be willing to amend yours to require the applicant to pay the requisite fines for the number of times that she, that she, you know, fined of, say, I don't think, I don't believe our code specifies a fine, but would you be willing to amend your motion to have her pay a fine of $500 and then reapply properly?
We can't, because right now, the motion is to go with what the planning commission said was, which was to deny.
That's what I thought, and it says here, recommended by the planning commission, but I watched that meeting, and I thought the planning commission denied it.
It was for one, recommended for denial. So, I think the question is, Councilwoman Selby, what were they recommending? They were recommending denial, which is, it's almost better to say they're recommending to not approve rather than to say deny.
So, yes votes here would be denied on this.
What is your motion specifically, Councilmember Zimmerman?
My motion's to go with the planning commission and deny.
Okay. Your motion is to not approve the permit.
And I agree, looking at this, we do, on the application process, ask them to certify that they are not in conflict with private covenants. If we're going to ask that on the application, then I think if they're in conflict, then we have to follow.
I don't think we ought to make it our practice to interpret the covenants of a homeowners' association. I mean, this very matter is, on a different matter, is headed to the Supreme Court of Oklahoma on a matter related to an HOA edem, which deals with interpretation of covenants. I don't think this is the venue for interpreting covenants. I do think that there's clear violation here of our city ordinance of operating a short-term rental without a permit.
But as of today, our ordinance says it cannot violate their covenant. I mean, we can do that later.
I think that that's fine, but I think at the end of the day, the homeowners' association would have to take that up with the homeowner in district court, because the interpretation of what is, like, I think the person staying in a short-term rental is going to probably say, I was using it as a residence for two days. That's probably what they're going to say, because it says, shall not be used for anything. That's probably what they're gonna say because it says shall not be used for anything other than residential purposes. So I think it's gonna be a matter of interpretation, but it's not for us to interpret. We're, we're trying to interpret our ordinance, which is really critical. And our ordinance says you shouldn't operate a short-term rental without, without a permit.
I, I agree with that. And it als- but it also asks them if they, if that would violate their covenant. So I think both, both are in agreement with what we're talking about.
I think the que- the question will come down, and I don't want to weigh in on what their homeowners' association covenants say. I read them because I was sent them. Thankfully, your homeowners' association sent them. It says the home shouldn't be used for anything, uh, other than a residential purpose. Um, and in j- like, the question is, like, with some residential just says li- living there, using as a residence. It doesn't say the amount of time, you know?
If you rent it out for one day, that's a short-term rental.
Well, I understand it's a short-term rental, but it's still a ret- like, the question is, is that a residential purpose or not?
Does your covenant say you cannot have short-term rentals?
No.
No, does it specifically say that?
But it says it must be a resident.
It says it has to be used for, it cannot be used for anything but residential purposes.
It cannot, that's, the covenant state, it cannot be used for anything but a residential purpose.
Right.
Um, and it's a slippery slope to ask for something like a covenant to say, well, you can't do this and you can't do that and you can't do something. Then you pick it apart and you, you end up going down a slippery slope. So I would stand by the verbiage in our covenant that clearly state homes can only be used for residential purposes.
Private residence only?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, it's just a question of is a short-term rental a private residence? Uh, I think the person that stays in a short-term rental probably would say so, whether they're staying there for two days or 10 days or 30 days. Um, but I don't believe that that's the matter that we're, that we are interpreting here. I believe that we, as a city council, are to look at our ordinance. And I, I still believe that this is a violation of our ordinance. I just don't, I just don't see it as, I don't hang my hat on the homeowners' association covenant. I hang my hat on the city ordinance that our city put in place with many, many, many meetings that were dedicated to this, to get it to the state that it's in. This is still a clear violation.
But if you watch that meeting, what I heard the residents say was that we moved into this neighborhood so that the covenant would be upheld. My neighborhood doesn't have a homeowners' association. So, you know, we don't have that. You know, we have Airbnbs in our neighborhood. Your residents moved into that neighborhood so that these things would be followed.
Agreed.
You know, just like some neighborhoods in Nichols Hills, you can't park a truck in the driveway. You have to turn it, pull it around back. You agree to that when you buy a home there. I feel like the, the planning commission denied it. And I feel like that's what your residents have agreed to when they moved into that neighborhood.
And I think either way we look at it, we're looking at denying it based off either one of the two facts.
My, my belief is that the reason matters because either way, there's gonna be somebody disappointed in it. Either the homeowner or the members of the homeowners' association. When those people are disappointed in it, their dispute is with one another and their venue is district court. Um, if the dispute is about our ordinance, we're the body that adjudicates that and, and the code enforcement officers. And so I think that's where we ought to focus our time and attention. Um, and I, I still think the answer may still be the same, but, uh, but I, I don't want to be in the middle of homeowners' associations and residents. I want to be in the middle of, uh, city ordinances and residents or business entities or whatever.
Right.
If I may, sir, the code specifically says clearly in ordinance that the short-term rental use is not to be in conflict.
I understand, ma'am. What I'm saying is it's very difficult. I, I don't disagree. You're reading the ordinance very well. I don't disagree at all. It's the interpretation of homeowners' covenants, this is not the best place for it. There's district, district court judges, I mean, the one in Edmond's been tied up for six years and is now going to the Oklahoma Supreme Court. That's how these things go.
Right.
I'm trying to focus on our ordinances, which I think are, it still may get to the same answer. So you, you still may be pleased with the answer, but it's a different reason. And I think that's, I, I feel very strongly about that because I think if we get into the business of adjudicating every dispute between a homeowner and a, and a resident, it's a very slippery slope. So I want to be really clear on my rash- I mean, every councilperson can have their rationale, their reasoning. That's my rationale. We're, we look at our ordinances and make some judgments there. Um, I, I don't necessarily want to be in the middle of a HOA and, and homeowner.
I, I understand.
And I don't think we get in the middle of the HOA and the homeowner. Our ordinance says, and that is what we have to go by. If we want to change our ordinance to not say that, that's something else. But right now, as of right now, our ordinance says cannot be in conflict with the HOA.
Roger, can you chime in at all on this?
Well, the mayor is correct in that this is an issue, the HOA interpretations are something that have to be enforced by a district court and can't be enforced by this group. You do have a language in your ordinance that says it shouldn't be in conflict. Question is whether or not this particular use is a residential use. And that's not a determination for you all to make. On one hand, someone's staying there, that makes it residential. On the other hand, a fee is being charged for it. And so it is a question of fact for, for a judge or a district court to make in that regard. But, um, you have before you multiple things to consider in approving it, not just the one thing. So I tend to agree with that interpretation.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate you coming and sharing and also your, uh, fellow homeowners that have reached out and talked to councilmembers. Appreciate that.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir, of course.
Uh, my name's Kenneth Floyd.
Kenneth, we spoke on the phone.
Yes. Um, I live at 1301 Kingsway Court. I'm the president of the homeowners' association. Um, I looked it up, the, the Article Six, Section 18, 155 was amended three times, I believe, December of '23, um, June of '24, and I think, or February '24 and, and June of '24. And they were signed off on by Roger Reinhardt, that, which states in there, and I'm not gonna get into it because we've already had a long discussion about it. Um, it's clear in our covenants that it's for private use only, private residence only. Um, I think once you start to run a business and lease these, whether it's a day, two days, five days, 10 days, whatever it is, you're leasing it from a business. So I don't believe that that's, that's like saying that a hotel room is, is my residence. That's not, I don't think that's accurate. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm gonna just speak on it. But if that's not enough, the violations should stop it immediately anyways because of the fact that we have proof. I've got pictures of everything that's been on Airbnb for, there's eight reviews before the permit was ever denied. And it also states on the codes that the house cannot be online or offline marketed. And it was marketed through the whole application until the la- just the day after the denial was given. And I have proof of that as well. But when you were talking to Rodney about maybe fining her $500, if I lived in a covenants and I knew and I signed the contract, that I'd be more than happy to pay $500 to get my permit that nobody else would give me. So do I think that that's anywhere close to being stern enough? No, I do not. I think she clearly violated. If she didn't know what she was doing before she got to that point, then once the application was there, then there should have been known.
Yeah, one point, one point of, uh, note there. I didn't say that we were gonna grant her the permit. I said that we were gonna fine her the $500. Then she could apply for the permit. Then, then it would still have to go through the proper channels and process. And it's not a guarantee that it would be granted then.
Okay. I apologize.
But, but that's what I was specifically requesting. If, if Councilman Zimmerman would like to amend his motion, that's his decision. He controls the motion. Uh, Councilman Zimmerman?
I think we're getting to the same point either way, aren't we?
Because don't we, we deny the permit. It'll come back to us again, right?
See, that's, uh, well, that was gonna be my next question.
I'm trying to remember, um, I think in the code, if it's denied, they're like locked out for, Danielle, is that true?
I think it's 12 months.
12 months, I think they're locked out. So I wouldn't say locked out, I mean that they can't apply for it. They can't just keep coming every month and applying for another permit.
So do we deny today or do we deny after she pays her fine and comes back to us again?
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. Okay. So the motion's on the table. Uh, it's been made by Councilman Zimmerman. The motion is to deny the permit. Uh, Vice Mayor Wooten has seconded the motion. Any other discussion? Seeing no additional discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Okay, a yes is denial.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Hillmore?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's deny.
At this time, we'll have discussion and possible action to enter executive session pursuant to 25OS 307B4 for the purpose of allowing confidential communications with the city attorney concerning the case style of Kevin Lang and Brenda Lang individually and as trustees of the Kevin Lang and Brenda Lang Joint Trust dated March 5th, 2018 versus the City of Yukon, case number CB 2025 304. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there any way we can move the visitor's section up? We have some people.
Actually, that would be fine with me. I have to depart, like I'm gonna depart, uh, at this time. Uh, I have some, uh, friends in from North Carolina that I'm visiting with this evening.
We just have some people that I'd hate for them to.
Yeah, I, I, I'm fine with that, but you guys make the decision. Is that what you'd like to do?
That's, that's fine.
Okay. At this time, we'll take up our visitor's section. I will hand off the, uh, the chairman duties to Vice Mayor Wooten.
So we're gonna hold off on executive session and go to?
23.
23. All right. So we'll go into visitor comments. Anyone have any items of business to present to the city council that does not appear on the agenda? Please come to the podium at this time, state your name and your address. Uh, you're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to City of Yukon business. The Oklahoma Open Meetings Act prohibits the city council from taking any official action on requests made during this portion of the agenda unless otherwise noted on the agenda.
This is just an FYI Saturday morning at the Czech Festival. I don't think the city wants to do this, but you could not access the curb cutout for wheelchairs because of the grandstand. And I witnessed a guy in a wheelchair have to be left up and lowered down. And just a simple solution of three feet would solve that problem because covering that space up, I could only imagine is a violation of the ADA stuff. So, and I don't think we want to do that. So it was just, this is just an FYI that that, that I witnessed that.
Thank you, ma'am.
We'll, we'll take your, thank you.
Sorry, this is my first time, so I'm like as green as blade grass.
Very nice.
Uh, my name is Aubrey Noblet. I live at 4105 Lake Drive over in Stonebridge Lake Estates. Um, I'm a licensed realtor, and so where I'm coming from is through that lens, so also bear with me there. I'm here today to talk to you about an opportunity that I feel is practical and forward-looking. And that is, um, Yukon's potential role in the Oklahoma Regional Transit Authority. Um, this isn't about changing who we are as a city. It's more about protecting our seat at the table because these communications and decisions are happening. We're just not participating in them. Um, I was able to, I'm like going really off script right now. I was able to meet formally the president of the RTA. His name is Marion Hutchinson. He's a wonderful guy. Um, he said he reached out to someone in city council a few years ago when they originally formed the authority in the district, the regional transportation district in the OKC metro, um, and that Yukon decided to opt out. I'm kinda coming to you to implore, like beg of you to bring it to a vote or at least reconsider it. Uh, the board is having a meeting on the 15th in downtown Oklahoma City. I think it's a very meaningful decision to be a part of. Um, in just the past five years, Yukon's population has climbed to roughly about 25,000 residents with new neighborhoods and businesses taking root. Projections show that by 2045, we could see 40,000 to 45,000 residents, growth on par with cities like Grapevine, Texas, um, before they joined Tex-Rail. Grapevine was able to leverage their partnership with Tex-Rail, um, into more than 200 million in private investments with new restaurants, hotels, and thriving small businesses. And I believe Yukon has that same potential if we plan now instead of waiting for later. Um, in my opinion, I feel that this can boost local businesses with commuter traffic and new customers. And we can expand our workforce access by helping local employers fill jobs. It also gives Yukon residents easier access to Oklahoma City for major events, think Thunder Games. I heard they're building a new soccer field out there. Um, parking is a nightmare, especially with Stitt's return to the office order. So there's a lot of people who are struggling to find parking. And this would be a way to put revenue back into the city if they decided to opt in. Um, and I think that it also helps us grow our tax base by attracting development near future stations. Um, I moved here from Denver and I can tell you that I survived thanks to the light rail there. And it's amazing because they put those stations in. And then after that, apartment complexes go up. You get retail stores, grocery stores. It just, it becomes a hub for people who don't have the financial stability to support driving as much. Um, I also think that it can ease traffic congestion along I-40 and Route 66. Um, and I don't think participation will commit Yukon to major spending. It just opens funding doors. I'm sorry, I had to write it down because I get like easily distracted. Um, I'm not asking for a commitment tonight. I'm asking the council to schedule a public workshop and direct staff to prepare a fact report so our residents can learn, ask questions, and decide based on facts. Uh, I think we should give the people of Yukon a voice in the conversation. And we can choose to move forward cautiously, responsibly, and transparently. Um, thank you for your time and your service to the community. Do you have questions for us?
We can't.
But I just want to say, I know you were nervous. You did well.
You did.
Thank you. I went way off script. I probably missed a few things.
Don't think we're not hearing you. We just can't comment back. Law won't let us, so, but you did wonderful.
My name's Anita Montgomery and I live at 7501 North Frisco Road. Um, I just would like to, I don't know if you all are aware of something related to the data center? It sounds, I know you're wanting to do something with the land that would put money back to the city, generate money for the city. And it sounds like you're wanting to, um, you're counting on franchise fees from OG&E. I just want to be sure you're aware that the legislature last session passed a law that allows companies like that to go behind the grid and furnish their own electricity for their data center. And it seems to me like that would, uh, preclude them paying franchise fees. So you sold the land and that might be all you get out of it. And that is not, I mean, I also agree with the comments about worrying about the water and the co- the extra electricity and the cost. Um, if you don't subscribe to the Energy, Oklahoma Energy Today newsletter, I get that every day. And almost every day, there are, uh, articles and information of places all over the United States having problems with data centers. And I brought some, just a few samplings if you all, I don't know if I'm allowed to give those to you that you could look at them.
We just can't say anything. Thank you. We can disperse them back there.
Hi, excuse me. Hi, my name's Eleanor Shybe and I've, I'm a citizen of Yukon. I live at 324 Ash Avenue. And I've never been to a council meeting. And I don't have a computer, so I don't know what's going on behind the scenes. But I am throwing my, um, throwing myself in with all the people that are against the data center. The woman who just spoke before me and, um, pe- newspaper articles, concerns from Donovan Fur, Ju- Julia C. or Si, about all the issues about it. I do not think we should have a data center there. I think it's too much of a strain on, on Yukon, on our water and electric and everything again, and everything for it. But I had some other ideas. Of course, I'm not a businessman, so I don't know. You'll probably think, what is she talking about? But anyway, this being Route 66, I think it needs to be some kind of a theme for Route 66, like a 50's diner with old cars in front or a 50's filling station, old cars in front. I've seen- I've seen that the filling station in El Reno, and I'm kind of jealous, they're getting worldwide visitors already, and they just haven't been open even that long for the whole Route sixty-six theme. I think we should jump on the Route sixty-six, Route sixty-six theme and have something, I don't know, something specifically about Yukon, maybe, um, a big Miller man or something inside the diner, or just, um, picture of the Yukon, the, the flower mill. I don't know. There's other places that are already in other cities that have their definite icons, where people that come and they always go to them, like Pops in Arcadia. Uh, a fifties diner with playground outside in the back for kids to play. I don't know if it has a dog park. I don't remember. It's been a while. There used to be Anne's Chicken Fry in Oklahoma City. It had an, an old Oklahoma Highway Patrol car there, I think from the forties maybe, and a pink Cadillac from the fifties. Great, super place, and plus they had a gift shop in the back. Something like that, a gift shop, maybe some little stores to bring in, um, revenue. Like, we've started building out, we've built out pretty much, uh, east all the way down to where the neighborhood Walmart is, little stores, except they shouldn't be like that. Those are just like straight strips. They should be Route sixty-six theme oriented. I think we should have something family oriented also. I've talked to other people. One lady gave me a, a, um, example of a miniature golf course. Um, bowling alley, which we lost our bowling alley years ago. Route sixty-six souvenir gift shops, maybe include sports, sports fields. I think they had an idea about that several years ago, but it was turned down. Baseball, soccer, basketball hoops, pickleball, walking trails, pond, and some, another splash pad, a dog park. Something family oriented, um, something that would show us for, for Yukon, for Yukon Millers. Um, I just think it, it, it might not be finished by the time the big celebration next year, but I think it be, should be something, it's on Route sixty-six, sixty-six. I think it should be something to do with Route sixty-six. That's how I feel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Anybody else? Mr. Burris?
Mr. Burris and Joe have been off quite.
Alright. Alright, so we'll move on from the visitor's comment. Um, we'll go to item sixteen. Roger, can we combine sixteen and eighteen? Is that?
You, you already voted on sixteen, I believe.
We just, he read it. We didn't vote. You don't have to reread it.
Sixteen? Can we, after we do that, can we vote on?
Yeah, seventeen we're pulling.
Pulling seventeen and then?
Eighteen.
And then?
They ought to be separately.
Alright, let's, um, go for a vote for item number sixteen.
Wooton?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
And then we'll go to item eighteen as well. Uh, discussion, possible action to enter executive session pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven B four for the purpose of allowing confidential communications with the city attorney concerning the case uh, running M Farms LLC and Oklahoma Limited Liability Company. Uh, will be the City of El Reno, a municipal corporation, and the city council for the City of El Reno Municipal Governing Body, case number C J twenty twenty-five dash ninety-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on that? Go for a vote.
Wooton?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Alright, folks, we're gonna go into executive session. You're more than welcome to and go home, whatever you would like to do.
I did have somebody reach out to me, too.
Alright, at this time, uh, we'll reconvene from executive session. I'm, make a motion to reconvene from executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Alright, let's vote on it.
Wooton?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, no actions was taken, and no votes were cast. Uh, new business. Is that where we're at here?
Is there any action?
Oh, um.
Number twenty.
Twenty, discussion, possible action resulting in executive session.
Did you read that little thing?
Yes. I'll read it again if I need to. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, no action was taken, no votes were cast. We good now?
Just no action out here.
No action, no action. Alright, um, let's go. Item twenty-one, new business. Madam Clerk, any new business?
No, sir.
Alright, and let's go reports. Section is intended for the mayor, council members, city manager, and staff to make announcements concerning municipal and community matters. Uh, let's go. Mr. Chris?
Uh, we're back to the long form, uh, report, so I apologize, but it is, um, good information. Um, while we're getting the slide pulled up, uh, I just wanted to take a minute to inform council as part of the financial report. Um, we do have Crawford and Associates, our consulting firm, here on site this week. Um, it's a unique situation. Uh, our city treasurer and myself, we're not here for the majority of fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, but, uh, both Stephanie, um, our purchasing agent, and Caleb, city treasurer, have done a fantastic job of getting the information that Crawford's requested, um, deciphering it and getting it back. Um, they had very positive things to say thus far, and are wrapping up, um, their visit with us tomorrow, so just a brief update on that. But, um, give you a brief financial summary. Um, I'll try to hit highlights. Um, as of nine thirty, uh, total balance in the accounts is about sixty-seven point five million. Um, again, that's items that are, uh, cash, claims on cash, CDs, and then any other cash equivalents. Um, we did close out our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, we waited that requisite days um, for any claims that might come in. We didn't receive any, so we were able to close that successfully. Um, and thus have installed our new budget, meaning all of our reporting is up to date. Um, sales tax, um, you can see briefly, um, looking up, trending up just a little bit for the year, um, about one point three um, over the same three, uh, months last year. Just a brief, uh, graphic breakdown, just kinda shows where that sales tax is distributed. Two cents to the general fund, three-quarter cent to capital improvement, um, a three-quarter cent to the pest fund, um, another quarter cent to general fund reserve, and the final quarter cent to another capital improvement, um, investiture. Um, use tax, um, did see, uh, this number go up from previous month. Uh, it was three thirty-three, eight oh one forty-eight for the month of September. Um, we are still trending down, um, in this matter. Um, we've talked some about, um, the refunds that we're seeing. Uh, that number has come down significantly. It was only about fifteen thousand this month. Um, we were seeing twenty-five thirty, um, so we anticipate that number to continue to grow, um, as we move forward. Um, again, just a breakdown of where those funds go. So with use tax, three cents does stay in the general sales tax, um, funds. Uh, one cent goes to capital improvement. So our other taxes, these are gas and tobacco, um, trending up seven point seven eight percent year-to-date. Um, total collection so far, fifty-six thousand, seven seventy-four twenty-one. Um, franchise fees, um, like likewise, um, looking very good, um, thus far. Uh, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, uh, five, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars collected, uh, twenty-nine point one five percent for the budget year. This is just a overview of general fund revenue summary by type. Um, again, I just wanna hit the, the byline just so you can see, um, in that three-month period, it is hard to run these reports and get, um, accurate information. But, um, we are trending very well, twenty-four point nine two percent, um, to budget, and we're twenty-five percent way, of the way through the year. Looking at our next slide here is just general fund expenditures. Um, again, this is not a perfect linear. Um, these are general expenses, but, um, certain things, um, items like furniture or big items like that that might have been purchased, kind of inflate these early on in the year. Um, you will continue to see that number come closer to what the actual, uh, percentage through the year is. We're not far off, twenty-eight point three seven this year. But, um, with the beginning of every budget year, there's always a need, um, to, to take care of some of those items. So, um, departments are being good stewards of that, um, so far through the year, this year. Just a brief overview on enterprise fund, um, pretty spot-on, about twenty-three point eight three percent, um, to the budget year. Um, thus far in revenue, twenty-one point seven five, um, percent in expenses. Again, both of those are well within, um, reasonable expectations for where we're at. Um, I'm just gonna spend a little more time on this last slide. Um, it's something that we've talked about a lot, um, in conversations with, um, just some of you on council and, um, city manager. This is one of those things where we talk about how much efficiency or how much small changes can really impact us. Looking back to twenty-twenty-three, um, for that entire fiscal year ended June of twenty-twenty-three, we collected about three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars worth of interest. Well underneath market rate. Twenty-twenty-four, that rate, um, that did increase, um, did collect a lot more. Um, it was an increase, um, but still underperforming where we should be as well as, as what the market would indicate we could have earned. In twenty-twenty, fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-five, we had about half the year, um, with our prior bank, which was Y and B, half the year with our new bank, Bank of Oklahoma. Um, we saw two hundred and seventy-five percent increase, um, year over year, um, one point seven million. Those are numbers that you've, you've been presented before but have seen. Um, we did include kind of the interest earnings there, um, via the bank statement from June of that year. Um, we earned four point one five with Bank of Oklahoma versus that point oh five percent, um, at Y and B. Um, thus far year-to-date, I just kinda wanted to give you an update. We've, uh, recorded two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars worth of interest thus far, um, earning three point nine five percent, um, interest in our holdings at Bank of Oklahoma. So, just again, we're, we're really trying to be good stewards and make sure that we're being efficient, um, with, with the funds we receive and really trying to make the biggest impact we can with those.
Any questions? Shelley, I have to say it. It's a lot of chickens.
It is a lot of chickens.
Thank you.
We used to get, I'm a visual person, so looking at numbers does nothing for me. And we used to have these graphs that we would get, and it would show like five years, and, and I, did y'all like those? I'm not, this that makes no, I mean, I look at numbers and I'm just like, but a graph, I can see better, like where we were, and are we doing better than we were last year? I would just love to see us.
Sure.
Put some of those in the back. Yeah, and it would have, like each year had a different color, um, and that way I could go, oh, look, back in twenty-three, here we were, and now we're in twenty-five. That, numbers do nothing for my eyes, so I'm just a visual person. Sorry.
Sure, we can definitely get those added back in. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Deckard.
Oh, I wanna take a minute to brag on our staff, uh, as you can see tonight, that the quality of our staff is just absolutely incredible. And, you know, given a little bit of encouragement and a little bit of leeway, that they have really blossomed and, and from Ashley to Brian to all of the directors, it's just incredible. And then, uh, about Merchant McIntyre today, we went around with them. I, I am not personally one that's big on the word lobbyist as, as to say, and I don't know that I use it for merch, but spending the day with them today, uh, we took them all over the place. It, it, it was extremely impressive, and we are in very good hands, so if you started that, would you, that is a great, and they are outstanding. So I was thirty, and I was, I didn't go in it as, I mean, it was, I was pretty skeptical as, you know, I wanna be good stewards of the, and there it is, it is outstanding, so that, that is a great program. But I just wanna brag on the staff.
Very good. Thanks, sir. Alright, council members.
Not many of us left.
No.
Alright, well, um, I'd just like to say congratulations to all the Main Street winners. That was wonderful. Um, to the ones that, that won the awards. Also, thank you to the city employees for check day. Um, see them out there working, and the fact that when I left, um, all the trash, and then when I went to church the next morning, it was gone. And so I love that they stayed and they got everything done, so thank you.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Uh, I did not get to participate in check day this year, but I've heard great things. I was on the road with my cross-country team Friday and Saturday. Um, I do want to thank Yukon Public Schools, cause tonight is parent-teacher conference night, and they graciously allowed me to miss to be here tonight.
That's huge.
Uh, check parade was, Czech Fest was amazing. Um, got the opportunity to judge the floats this year, and that was, that was a blast. Had the best seat in the house. It was good times. Uh, let's see, what do we got here for, um, special events? We've got the Chisholm Trail Festival coming up September, October, I'm sorry, Saturday, October eighteenth. Ten AM to five PM at the Molly Spencer Farm, one thousand one Garth Brooks Boulevard. It's free. Uh, live reenactments of the Old West. Mr. Deckard, when you grew up, the Old West. Food trucks, craft.
I still ride my horse, thank you.
Yes, you do, sir. Chuck wagons, cowboy poetry reading, pumpkin patch pie eating contest, and other kids and family activities. That's on the eighteenth. Also, let's see, the twenty-fourth, we have the mummy and son masquerade. Uh, that's from six to eight PM at Jackie Cooper Gym. It's, uh, five dollars per person. Uh, we have music and dancing, spooky kid-friendly activities and games, costume contests and other competitions. Uh, get some candy, and also lots of other fun for sons and their mummies. Um, I think that's all I've got on announcements. So, there we go. We'll end it on that.